I will call the acting school committee meeting Thursday, March 9, 2023 to order at this time, and we'll begin by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome our warrant finance committee members here again tonight, and any others who are visiting with us. And are there any, at this time, we'll go on to number two, are there any comments from the public?
No, we need adjustments to the agenda first.
Oh, yes, adjustments to the agenda.
I do have some, thank you. And Jennifer, who's taking minutes, I'm gonna go slowly, because there's few. So what we're going to add for new business, excuse me, the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna change number three, Jen, which is AP instructional coach nomination to AP instructional coach hiring committee. When we get to that agenda item, I'll explain.
Six point three.
Six point three. New business, six point three, I'm sorry. Six three, AP instructional coach hiring committee. Then we're gonna add a six point four, which is transportation contract FY 24 to FY 26. Just peek up at me when you're done, I'll do the last one. Okay? And then the last one is a six five, and that is to move funding out of capital reserve fund for freezer. That's enough, and then we'll get into it when we get to that one. Okay? And just for a point of order, we will transition into a budget meeting, and there is no executive session listed, so we'll end the meeting from the budget meeting.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, then, let's move on to number three. Look for a motion to accept the consent agenda, please.
So moved. I'll second that.
Mary and Amanda? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, do any committee members have any questions or comments about any of the administrative reports that we got in our packet this week?
No. Until we get to policy.
All set on, all set on most? Okay. All right, then, we'll go on to the superintendory board.
You bet. I just have a few bullets to update since we have met thirty days ago. As you've noticed, there's been much snow that has arrived in the month of March, and it's been a blast opening up the sledding hill to the kids again. We've had a lot of fun with that, and we've been doing a roof. So the sledding hill is for grades three through five, because it's a great hill. If you've ever been out there, catch it while there's snow on it. The K through two kids have a little hill inside by the fence, by the slide. So what's been really fun is, I'll go out with three through five, because you need an extra, you need a body just on the hill, so that's me. And then I went around and made sure that K one, two, all had a chance to use the big hill, and I got so many thank you cards. It was just, it was great. I had to share that with you, and the snow's been awesome, and I don't think it's gonna stick around much longer, because it's gonna go fast in March. We continue to focus on our ALIS training, our new safety program, our ALIS training, and our ALIS trainer is wrapping up his individual classroom audits for safety. He's been working with Andy and I and doing a great job. And teachers did a great job with T1 report cards and bright space, and that's coming right up. So Patty's jockeyed some professional development time to allow them to get what they need to go back and remember, oh, yeah, we need to post our grades, how do we do this? Because this is new. It's, you do it once, you're not a master of it. So we're giving them the time, and the expectation is that we have our online learning platform, and it's robust, and parents can see it, but they will also get a report card. It'll also be coming out before our next meeting. And just lastly, I want to tip my hat one more time to Andy. It's crazy, these weekend storms come in, and I'll text him, maybe, how's it going? And he's like, we're great. And I show up on Monday, and the place is safe and good, and just knocking it out of the park. And hopefully you don't have to anymore, Andy. But you guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, we got a good winter overall, so.
It all came once, though, didn't it?
It did.
And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. I want to know who's, I know you're out there supervising your third and fifth grade, but I want to know who's supervising you and the sheriff when you slow down.
Oh, my gosh. Yes, we had a race. Deputy Sheriff Sandborn and I raced down the hill, and of course, he has a little length advantage, because he's about six-six, but I still think I won the race. There's some debate there.
Yeah.
Oh, like, maybe he won by the toe or something?
Maybe.
I heard it was a tie.
Yeah, it was a tie. That's what I'd like to thank you for.
Okay, let's move on now, then, to, anybody have any questions or comments for John? Then let's move on to committee reports, and we'll start with the policy committee.
Okay, well, let's see. The first one, these are all updates.
Okay.
GCSA employee use of technology. Some of the changes were, we changed the word board to committee. Remember, we did that. And then we're superintendent and designated superintendent principal. Other than that, the words, well, no, down here on number three, it said, we eliminated in child pornography, we omitted that, whatever was obscene to minus. And other things have all crossed out.
Kind of redundant, yeah.
Because it was redundant, thank you for mentioning that. It was too much.
It made sense, yeah. That is.
Couple of spelling errors. Other than that, there really is no change. Just update from way, what, 2010, something like that.
It's just a point of voting. I think it's important for the policy committee to let the school committee know that 511 through 515 can be taken as a block, as a review. It's not clear in the agenda that 5116 is a new policy, and we'll need two readings.
That was my question.
And we'll need two readings. So tonight will be the first reading, and it'll show up as old business next month.
And also, 5114, we're recommending to delete that completely, because we have two of the exact same policies that are coded under different things. So this was the second one, so we already have the, literally the exact same one.
We don't need to do that again, no. And the residency affidavit, there was a couple of spelling things that we changed, but nothing spectacular was. Physical residents needed a utility bill, and don't need, and driver's license, and the last paragraph was, you don't need to provide a purchase and sales agreement, call the school if you want any more information about residency. And that was way back from 2012. So all of these are just being updated. I mean, the book is like this stick, believe it or not.
Oh, I believe it. Well, let's do it this way. First of all, I will look for a motion to delete policy number 5114, statement for free and new slope, price benefits.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Now I'll look for a motion to accept 5111, 5112, 5113, and 5115, as amended as of this date.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. And now we have 5116, JHC Naxolone policy, which is new, and I will look for a motion to accept that for a first reading.
So moved.
I'll second.
Now, why are we talking about this?
Would you like to start that? I can fill in any blanks, will you go right ahead?
Carol Wendell came to us and suggested that we implement this policy or adopt this policy, just because it's a thing, so naloxone is Narcan, so for anybody out there, when someone overdoses, they get a shot of naloxone, and it brings them back. And it is not a drug that can hurt anyone, so like, if I shot Amanda right now, nothing would happen to her.
Up the nose.
It's up the nose.
Okay, sorry. And, yeah, so with the school being a place where people come for basketball games and other town events, Carol thought it would be good to have it here in the school just for, because there are, not so much for the kids in the school, but for the adults in the community who use the school as a place to do things.
Out of curiosity, does the town have that at the town hall?
I don't know. I do know that it's more and more public places are keeping them with AEDs.
Right.
So that's my guess.
I guess the town or the fire department would be my thought, but, no, I think it's smart to have it at the school where a lot of events happen. You get people from other towns, people from here, doesn't hurt.
Unfortunately, we have to come to this.
Yep, yep.
The thing of the news the other day about this particular product, and there were some side effects, I don't recall at the time what that was in the news, but I do remember that this subject came up in the news about some problems.
Yeah, but it's better than death.
Yeah, I was gonna say, a side effect beats giving up the ghost, anyway, right?
But it's also something that I think pretty much, they have it now, that any person could go into a pharmacy and say, hey, I have a concern about someone I know, I want to have this on hand, and you can get it.
You can get it without a prescription.
Yeah.
There's no secondary market for this. Nobody's gonna steal and sell it to somebody.
And Carol also said that the school's dose would be covered by grants and things that she, that she gets.
Good.
So it's free.
And your packets have a lot of information in it. Of course, the policy's on top. That's all we really need to adopt, but the information was for the board to have the questions.
Yep. Great.
So we already have a motion to accept that for a first reading by Mary, and a second by CJ.
Not being very familiar with the school, I'm taking from the discussion that there is no current need or use for naloxone in the school, right, for any students?
That's correct.
Next question was, where are we planning on storing this or having it available? Who is gonna have access?
So that would be my decision, working with our nurse, who's considered our health officer. And currently, in committee, we just discussed perhaps with the AED. Once this policy goes through, we'll make a decision on the best place. And the reason we're thinking Charlie AED is because it has access to the gym, it's right there, and that's where everybody goes.
If you're gonna have it in the nurse's office.
No, no, it needs to be out, because there's a very good chance if it's being used, it's gonna be when kids aren't in the building, it's gonna be nighttime. That's our guess. So it's probably gonna be right there, but the answer to the question, I haven't decided yet. I'll take it under consideration, that's probably it. Yeah.
Any further discussion? We ready for a vote? All those in favor? All right, let's move on now to 52, long range planning committee.
Yes, we met tonight, and first thing, we were looking at the proposals for fixing the roof. We're talking about the flat part of the roof that goes from basically the main office over to the 57 wing, so it's the flat roof. So we're still waiting on one other quote, and then we'll make a decision on what to do, because we want to do it this upcoming fiscal year. The other thing, we just quick mentioned that the kitchen freezer isn't going to last, so we would like to move the funds, and that's gonna come up later at 6.5. So we'll do that then.
Anybody have any questions for the long range planning committee? Okay, how's the dishwasher?
That's on, you know, that's coming up for FY 26.
We asked Polly to prioritize kitchen equipment. That one looked like it was moving more towards, we're gonna get a few years out of it.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, then let's move on to number six, new business.
So there's a number of these here. So the first one is something that the school committee deals with most years, it depends on the snow. And for a while, I thought we were gonna have an open winter, I wasn't sure what this winter was gonna look like. And we've had enough snow days, so this is interesting. Our calendar for this school year, the way it works, is when we adopted this calendar approximately a year ago, you never know when, you know, you have your days you have to meet, and then you have, you know, snow days that are not built in. So if you have a snow day, you have to make that up. A lot of, there's been some discussion, don't you build in your snow days, and then you get out early? Now you build a calendar, and then you take your snow days as you take your snow days. So right now, in this school year, we're targeted without snow days to get out June 15th at 12:30, which is a Thursday. If we add in our snow days, it literally brings us to a week after, which is June 22nd at 12:30, which is a Thursday. So my proposal to you, as I've done in the past, I'm doing it earlier this year, because we have, it worked out perfectly, we looked at this twice, Patty and I. If we move to change E R D Wednesdays starting the 15th, which is the next Wednesday of the calendar, that's a week from yesterday, if we make a move, as we have in the past, to have children stay till 2:30, and we remove the early release for the rest of the school year, we will have the teachers stay for their committed professional development that hour, but they'll stay after school. It won't be the children leave and they get professional development, it'll be the children stay and they get professional, so it won't be early release, it'll just be a PD day every Wednesday moving forward. That will, without another snow day, that'll take us right back to the original day of Thursday at 12:30, the 15th.
Well, we also have March 17.
We added that already, so that's it, so we got that day back, so that's with March 17th being the school day. We could absorb another school day, which would, if we had another snow day, now we're looking at Friday at 12:30 to 16th. Anything other than that, it moves us into the weekend, and then what's interesting is, Monday's a federal holiday now. Then you'd be having your kids come back Tuesday for two and a half hours. So I'm looking at a parent right here, and I know what the kids are feeling, I don't know how the kids are feeling, but if you make this move, the kids will get an extra hour a day on Wednesday. We'll keep the teachers, and pending no more than one school day, snow day, we'll be right around our target, our original target date. Two snow days, we're gonna, we're gonna end up coming back after a holiday for two and a half hours, and I just don't see families being like, we're gonna stay here for four days to come back for two and a half hours? Because we've been down that road before, I'm just saying, that's what it is. So I'm kind of recommending that you take, take the vote, the motion would be to, and I can help you with it, would be to just basically end school at 2:30 on Wednesday starting on the 15th. Patty and I'll take care of the professional development piece. If you make that decision, I'll get a memo right out to parents saying, next Wednesday, starting next Wednesday, buses, pickup, everything will be just like it is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, nothing changes. And it's good to let parents know, because some of them may have a plan for Wednesdays, because it's now earlier than every other day. And I need to give them some heads-up time, so they'll try and come up tomorrow.
Is this anything that has to go through contractually? Does this have to go through?
No, I did all my, all my homework, as I've done in the past, I met with both the support staff union and the teachers' union. You know, if they were gonna fight this or it didn't work for them, I wouldn't push it, but I showed them the dates, and I said, it's uncanny how the times line up. Another snow day doesn't line up so much, but another snow day still doesn't get us into the Monday holiday. And they, you know, polled their people and got back to me, both presidents, and said, no, we're good with it, you can move forward with it. So I said, all right, when we get together with the school committee, I'll make the pitch. It's up to you, because it's the calendar, only you can change the school calendar. And if you do it, I'll get right on it, you know, I'll do that, and I'll get it right out the door. So, yeah, that's the proposal.
So I'll look for a motion to eliminate the early release on Wednesdays for the remainder of the school year, and adjust the calendar accordingly.
So moved. Yep, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just a note for me, I appreciate the accordingly, because if we get another snow day, I'm gonna have to adjust it to Friday, and I hate to come back one day. So you've given me that bump, thank you. That's good.
Okay, 62 is the update on your safety planning.
I put it in my packet, but not everybody sees the packet that goes out, and I just wanted to let the public know that we continue with our ALIS training, and we're doing a really, really good job. And I networked just this morning with another school official about changing our safety procedures and changing in a bigger district, and we started this process maybe three and a half months ago, and we're already, already at a level where people feel empowered to take the procedures in their own classroom and do what they may as they've been trained. Bigger districts aren't even where we are yet. Again, small school, you can move a smaller ship quicker than you can a bigger ship. Everything is going really well with this. I'm thinking, just to put it out there, when we open school next year, I don't think it's prudent to do it in June, but when we open school, and people are thinking, okay, we're back, what does school look like this year, that we have some sort of a parent night around some of this. Because there are some significant changes, and a lot of this can be discussed. There are very few secrets about what we do around student safety anymore, because you can find on the internet just about anything you want. So we use plain language, we don't do code, and it's a nice program, and we're training, and we've been trained, and I think by the time we open school, maybe we could do an additional to the, whatever the open house is. If you're interested, come a half hour early, and I'll give you a quick presentation on what, what it is this year we'll be doing with your children to keep them safe.
I think that's good.
Yeah. I'd like to shoot for June, but people's minds from June aren't really about school. I think it really is, it's a September thing. And we're not together enough on this to do it any sooner.
Yep.
That was just more of a public service announcement.
Okay. AP instructional?
Six three.
Six three.
That was a change in, in, in the way that this was written under new business, because we need to put together a hiring committee, and because it's a permanent administrative position, I spoke with Judy, and we'd like a school committee member on that. So just so the school committee knows, I will have representation from every cohort, and they've already told me who it is they'd like to send to the committee. I will be on the committee. Paula, most likely, will be on the committee, and then we'll look for one of you. And once you volunteer and sign up, this doesn't require a vote, by the way, I'll work around your schedule. My best guess is we will probably have a couple of interviews after school one day. I just need to know whoever volunteers will work around your schedule and pick the day around you. And we should, we, we would really want to do this before the next April, excuse me, the next school committee meeting in April, so that if we have an internal candidate that works for the school system, we can nominate and move on from there. Okay? So I'll leave that to you, Judy, how you wanna do that, okay?
I nominate CJ.
I was told I'm volunteering. Sure, let's do it.
Vol and told, is that what it is? I heard that.
With a smile.
Thank you, CJ.
It was nice of you to volunteer like that.
I'll email you and reach out for dates, you tell me what you can do.
Sounds good.
Excellent, thanks so much.
All right, 64, transportation contract.
That's another one I added. So tonight at the budget meeting, one of the articles, Article nine, we'll be looking at, is transportation to include it in next year's fiscal year budget, but our contract runs out in June, so I need a contract adopted for us to look at that budget item tonight in just a little bit. I gave the school committee a packet with all the information in it and the bid, and tonight we can look at, you know, what that, how that price compares to last year's, and then I can talk about the next three years, but we really want to focus on next year for next year's budget meeting. The one thing I am happy to say is it's our, the recommendation is from our current Southern Maine Administrative Collaborative, it's a company who's running our buses, we're pretty happy with them, their price was competitive, so that's my recommendation to you, and you have the whole packet there. With an affirmative vote, we can move into that tonight. If it is not an affirmative vote, we'll pick up those pieces and figure out where we go next.
Has everybody had a chance to look the packet over?
Yes. But it was the only bid we got.
Correct.
So, but, they've been very good.
They have.
And I remember when they first came to us, I don't think they knew what they got into.
I think you're right.
And we did very well in the last contract, because prices went up, and we were paying the same. So we did very good. Now they're gonna make up for it, I'm sure. No, I mean, prices of fuel is, I mean, diesel is outrageous.
Yeah.
So.
It has gone up quite a bit.
When I see Article nine, you're saying it's 10.88% or?
Overall, right?
Overall.
No, just for the?
Just for the bus.
That line.
I don't have that budget piece in front of me, we went over these today.
Okay.
So you're looking at a 10% increase from the last year of the last contract to the first year of the new contract?
No, contract wise, I guess it's the 12.35%.
We don't, actually, the life of the contract, we don't have the overall on that. All we have is the one year, which is next.
Oh, right.
I know what you're asking, and that would be doing the math from the last contract to this one.
So what we're looking at right now is for FY 24?
That's correct. That's correct, because we do a budget one year at a time.
Well, it's a budget, but contract is three years.
Yeah, and you have the numbers right there in front of you.
So we asked, Mary and I asked you about it before, but we'd keep all the same bus drivers and stuff, everything would stay the same.
All the same bus drivers, the drop chains, everything in the contract we passed when we first did business with them, it's basically the same contract. The increase in prices is just the inflation on the fuel and the labor side of it, the drivers. So, yeah, it's basically the same thing, and what is really good is when we have a bus that goes down, we have replacements available, and we, we have way less of a bus driver issue than most districts have had. I think that's easing a bit, but that was tricky for a lot of districts. We never really, we never canceled a bus run due to not having a driver. We have had to change bus runs because a bus wouldn't start. We've had some interesting reasons to change a bus run, but not because we didn't have a driver. So that's, that's gone well, and shows they stick around.
And also because our superintendent is a?
A bus driver.
I can drive a bus, and that's just a little reason to help, yeah. Bus aid.
It's just another half.
Just another half. All right, so then I will look for a motion to approve the transportation contract with the Southern Maine Administrative Collaborative for the years 24, 25, and 26.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, so we're moving on now to 65, and we're gonna talk about the freezer.
Right, so the freezer's on its last legs, I think even today was it worked on?
Yes.
So, we need to take some money from our capital repair reserve fund and get it fixed. So we, the motion would be to spend up to $15,000 from the capital repair reserve fund to go for the kitchen freezer repair.
Okay, and that motion is coming from you, from your committee, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Second on that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Well, Andy did get a couple quotes for it, so, and the people that fix the cooler is a good one to fix the freezer part, too.
So there were bids.
Southern Maine Refrigeration out of Arundel.
And we knew this was needed. We've been talking about this for a while.
And this is coming under the capital reserve?
It's coming out of capital.
Yeah.
So the motion is to move up to $15,000 from that account to the $100,000 that they moved in last year.
Right here.
$15,000 per repair seems like a lot of money. What would the life of that be?
Why are we buying?
That $15,000 for repair is more the way to go, other than a replacement? Isn't that a repair?
It's a replacement.
This is a replacement.
Go ahead, Andy, why don't you, it's hard to envision what a replacement for a walk-in. Can you give us just a little bit of that?
Yeah, because it's a walk-in, that's, you don't?
Yeah, I know what a walk-in is.
Basically, it's replacing all of the components, the components inside the freezer itself and the components outside.
Yeah, the box is staying.
Right.
And you're replacing everything on the inside.
Pretty much all of the components, the line set, all of it. And that's like 1990-ish is when that one was installed, I believe. So you're looking at a pretty, you know, 25 to 30-year life expectancy once it's replaced. Look at the refrigerant. That is kind of out of my wheelhouse, but it's all, it's not the old R13, obviously, it's the newer stuff that they use.
Or 12. Okay, no problem.
So, but that's, that's a turnkey package, just to recover the old refrigerant and dispose of everything and install all the new components. And like Amanda said, we've used this company in the past, they're very reputable, and they did a really good job the last time we used them, so.
Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay.
And they were cheaper than the other one.
I'm sorry, what has your life cycle been on your freezer? Or this is the first time you've had to replace it? This is the first time it's been replaced. And when was that one installed? Nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-two-ish.